orders.
First matter of all business, the government states, this is a non-conforming bungalow colony, pre-existing. So really here, because it is non-conforming, a use variance is required rather than area variances. Because any change, expansion is a just in addition to the non-conforming use. So the last time this was on, you know, we had a discussion on that regard because the application initially came in as just an area variance application. I know there's some back and forth, and I think originally it was use variance, that was an area variance, but it needs to be a use variance. So we requested just more financial data to demonstrate that you look standard for this variance. Everything, uh, do you know, it's on this thing, Greg?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I think he made of, of, uh, I'm sure the applicant is going to get up. I don't know if he's changed anything with these square footages or, or any dimension. No, no change. He's not as that now. I don't think there's been any changes to that. Uh, just look forward to hear the applicant and see, uh, what we're proposing for the variance. So.
Alright, so I think we've got to see, uh, what, what the materials and information that they have, uh, any questions?
You say there's three is the charm. The charm.
Alright, so the next matter, we're moving into new business. We do have five, uh, public hearings on this one. So Irvington was had to open at the last one, so we'll just have to, you know, continue that public hearing. We're trying to say we've got a big crowd here today.
You like five meetings per week?
No, no, we have five public hearings. Yeah, so, uh, new business, we have Rosenberg, uh, which is the, it was the mobile home unit. That was five, now it's coming in, new application looking for a use variance for a hunting cabin, uh, which still they're looking for a use variance because it's not a use that's allowed in residential buildings in which the slot falls.
Do you want me to tie me home to a hunting cabin?
Well, the hunting cabin is just.
I haven't worked for.
Well, so, so we, we originally viewed this as a RV more than four months. Uh, the, it's not really a tiny home and it's not really a trailer. It's a, a travel trailer. It's a, it's on a mobile trailer that's registered insured. So he can pull it out, he can drive it around the road, uh, but it's not a typical RV that's registered by the state as an RV. Huh? No, but it's a towable. It's a towable. It's a towable unit.
Right, that's because you have to, you move it from the property.
So we, last month, last month, we, 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 we didn't catch that the, the four-month rule only applied to two different zones, which it wasn't really in. So we had to bring it back for another use essentially as a use variance, I guess, right? For the, the hunting cabin or, or, yeah, yeah, hunting cabin you're allowed to keep. Uh, it doesn't follow the, the other code, the travel trailer or, or whatever on the.
But for our other things, you're allowed to have it there four months on the old way, which doesn't count.
Which we can't, yes. Hunting cabin is going to stay.
Hunt and then put back.
If it was a travel trailer, four months, it could be on the property. You could take it off for one day and bring it back.
One day.
One day and bring it back. It was, the thing was, is, is, is it wasn't supposed to be there more, more than four consecutive months. It wasn't supposed to be occupied more than thirty consecutive days. They don't want people living full-time in a RV, essentially what the rule is. We don't want to diminish the people from the right to use their property for recreational purposes, to come up, enjoy a weekend. Uh, we just don't want permanent campers all over town. So we do have a provision in our code for hunting cabins, which is allows for a more permanent, you can keep it there. It's kind of like a tiny house situation. Doesn't have to have water septic. It was, it's for the purposes of enjoying your property on the weekends. We do have a provision in the code. Uh, it's allowed in ag zones and REC zones. We end up being in our, our, our zone here. R-zone, so he needs a use variance to allow the use extended to the R-zone. Now he's surrounded by REC zone. It's just that he's in a, he's just happens to be this particular lot is in an R-zone. So the lot has also other challenges. It is a, it was a saleable lot. Uh, the town has two easements through the property, one for water, one for sewer, that, uh, there is waters, the water and sewer mains for the town run right through the center of the property. So the property, people have been buying this property for years and paying taxes on it and, uh, this is client purchased the property for like, wanted to hang out there with his family on the weekends. That was his intention. He bought the property. Uh, I thought, when I first researched the code, I thought he could leave a camper there for four months or that tiny house there. Uh, but it was his intention to leave it there longer and I told him that he'd have to take it out to comply with the code. So I said, you better, you might as well just, before the four months is even up, come, before the summer even starts, come to see the zoning board. Let's see if we can, if we can, if the, if the zoning board is willing to make a compromise with you to leave it there with conditions or whatever. And that's when he came and then we found out that there was a, I, I didn't look at the, the, the code where the, the travel trailers wasn't allowed. The same, same thing with the travel trailer.
I think it was REC.
So the water and sewer are underground.
Correct.
What do you think of the structure that he wants to put there on top of?
That's our, the town's best, uh, the best scenario for it, honestly, because it can be moved out of the way in case they need to dig up the water and sewer lines. Uh, if he does, if he does build a structure there, I don't know what the legal implications are about building. Depends how deep the lines are. I don't know what the, uh, there are town sewer lines that run under properties in other portions of town. This right through here, right through the back of Main Street, the buildings run over top of, the sewer line is actually underneath the buildings. So, yeah, so, but the town has right to come in on the property since they have the easement, if they need to do something on the property. So if he does anything permanently, a patio, say he does a concrete patio or a paver patio, the town has the right to just go in there, dig it up and not have to fix it. In other words, it could be, yes, yeah. They need to get to it to repair it. We, we, we just did this, uh, a couple of years ago with the Woodburn shul. They, the Woodburn synagogue wanted to do pavers through the whole backyard. They did like these fancy paving stones on sand. We told them they could do it, but the town may someday have to come in and tear the pavers up to, to fix the sewer water line and it would be their responsibility to put it back down. And they agreed to it before they did it. Uh, so.
So the, how large, is there, is there a possibility that they actually just built on a different part of the property and then getting area variances instead of a use variance?
The property is very tight. It's, it's not a very big property. Yeah, it, it's, it's just barely conforming to fit a house on it. It is a, it is a small lot. You're allowed to build on any lot in the town of Fallsburg if you can meet the setbacks.
Yeah.
And I think that this property did allow for a small house if, but we also had to address water sewer lines. Uh, I don't know if we have any perfect map that, out easements to the, we just have the easements through there. Uh, the town came and marked out where the lines are for, for the, the client. So when he was doing work there or he's putting a fence around the property now to keep people out because there's been, there's been drownings there and there's been, uh, other injuries at the site. Uh, so he doesn't, he's not looking to get, uh, he's trying to keep the people out so he doesn't get sued for that liability.
Into the water.
Yes, yes, so.
And then.
It's good to hear on top.
So we got the two thirty nine.
So that was on the dryer, so that came in on the RV use, um, so probably on this one, we've got an application, we will have to.
What was? I did.
The two thirty nine came back, um, June fourteenth. It was for recommending disapproval. Here, the concern was that the use variance requirements, uh, are just a heavy burden to meet. So the applicant purchased the property with all the zoning and stated conditions and existence. Further, the unit shown in the application should be easily made to fit the standards for a residential unit, which would not require a use variance. So they were just looking at it that the tiny home, uh, unit theoretically can be put on a foundation and meet the criteria where they could see area variances to rectify the issue rather than use variance. Um, and I guess that brings up a question of, what's the square footage, uh, minimum twelve hundred?
We have a twelve hundred square footage minimum on our house. We don't have provisions for tiny houses. The only provision we have for the smaller square footage is the hunting cabins.
When they have a closing, when this guy report the property, they have a closing. Don't it be a tiny for the seller or even the buyer, buyers, buyer, uh, there's some?
Typically, um, what you're seeing since COVID is a lot of cash purchases where people waive title. They won't do title searches or anything. They just want to buy what they want in cash and then they just waive all of those searches that would have let them know. You know, so typically if I were to buy a house like tomorrow, I would want to have a title search and be able to look.
Where to know his own.
Uh, don't come up again on a, on a title search.
So this property had probably twenty and twenty potential buyers prior to his owner. And when it went up for sale, everybody was asking, everybody was asking about it. And our office told everybody the same thing, uh, pretty much it's a buildable lot. Any lot in the town of Fallsburg is a buildable lot. It's in an R-zone. You can build as long as you can conform to the R standards for setbacks. It's in water and sewer, so, uh, but the owners didn't know, the people purchasing didn't know that the town had some easements through there and, uh, we told everybody that they needed to work around those easements, make agreements with the town, you know? You know, I didn't know exactly where the easements were and stuff like that.
So.
Yeah, so, so the easements are to just allow the town on the property to access the, the water and sewer lines. Nice, it doesn't have an easement through there. The state does have an easement at the front of his parcel to access some cleanout drains for the, for the property, for the bridge, honestly, the bridge, so.
And so I think, uh, you know, we're going to need some more information on this one of what the plan is. And I guess the question becomes with the use variance, you can do a hunting cabin on this property. Then the, the footprint being large is to put a home there that needs to twelve hundred square feet or then, you know, come and try to get area variance. I mean, that should come into the calculus to some extent. And just on these variances, you really have to show that any possible use is impossible except for this one. So, um, which could be done with financial batch to show how difficult, uh, it's going to be to, or how expensive or just impractical it is because of these spans.
Very.
Any other questions on this one? Next one, we have.
I am freed.
Yeah, this one is a request for an area variance regarding a deck that was built, um, without a permit. It's basically looking for a separation of fourteen feet rather than fifteen feet. So, in the scheme of things, it's a pretty minor difference. But Greg, uh, as far as fire code goes, I mean, we have to make sure there's firewalls and additional safety measures, correct?
So I don't know how firewalls would apply to decks. So the, in our, uh, this, this development, this in is a, is a, is a development with good fire flow. So we have minimum separation requirements of twenty-five feet between structures and no more than, than, uh, than five, in that twenty-five foot separation, they say you're allowed to build within five feet of each side of the building, which leaves a fifteen-foot clear pathway between the, uh, between the decks. This is a different, this is a totally different one. That one was last month. That one was last month.
So this deck was built.
Yes, yes. I honestly didn't look at it. It was one of my guys, one of my guys had been out there. Uh, I have not honestly seen it myself.
I, I saw that enough. It's, I saw you putting on the wall, the, probably the next feature.
Correct, yes, yeah. The girder might be need to be moved in and stuff like that.
Yeah. Yeah, we got any pictures of this one? It might be something worth asking to see, uh, based on.
I'm going to look for some pictures for you guys while we're doing other stuff. I have the violations in my, in my tablet. Yeah, I'll find. Huh? No, I don't believe so. This is a, this is a, this is young, this is a brand new one. This is, uh, Yom Tov late. This is Westbourne. This is Westbourne, uh, this is Westbourne.
But I think on this one, not as apparent in the.
Was she representing this one tonight? Do you have pictures of everything? Okay, so our client will bring up pictures of everything. Uh, I'm going to look on my tablet too, see if I have it.
Yeah, I think we'll want to know just the width and everything because of how much he mentions, it could be an option. It's just cutting a foot off and there's no need for a variance.
Can we talk about the next one?
Yeah, this one, this one I know a lot about, so I, yeah. So we call this place Central Park. Uh, the last, uh, well, over the winter, they built a bungalow in the, in the rear of the, the bungalow colony, uh, no, no.
Where's the location?
So, so, so the owner, the, when I stopped the job, the owner reached out to me and said he had, he had approved, prior approvals from the board to, uh, to replace two bungalows in the, in the process. So I'm like, okay, that's fine. Bring me those approvals. It ended up being that those approvals were for different, they, they had a different agreement. The old, so it wasn't at the same place. They were supposed to take down, they, so they were allowed to take down this one building and they were allowed to build two new units. Yeah, so there was a, there was a bigger unit that they were going to take down. They were going to replace, there was, there was a single family, two-story house with four units. They were going to take the building down and they were going to replace it with two duplex bungalows on the property, uh, closer to the front of the property. Uh, they never followed through. They never, they never did it. It got approved and then they never did it. Uh, and then a few years went by. I don't remember the whole story. It's a new owner bought the place or whatever. There was, there, I was told there was a lot of confusion. The owner thought they could build the building there. We stopped them and it's a shell now standing there. Uh, I, I told the, I put a violation on it. I, I've had court tickets on it. I've been holding the court tickets, uh, for, if he showed up the planning board and zoning, we'll get him through the, see if we can get through the process. If, if we can make it legal, we'll make it legal before we prosecute it for, so, uh. Did change the location, yes. He pushed it in the back and, and the set doesn't meet the twenty-five foot separation, so we had. He knew he didn't have a permit. He knew that he had approvals to build several years earlier and he never did it. I don't know if it was the same owner.
This is from the original project.
Who's representing this one? Huh? Joel, you represent in Central Park? Huh? Glenn Smith is coming. Okay. Did that engineer, the engineer who, who did the last approval for them is coming tonight. So I guess we'll, we can sort it out, but it doesn't, it doesn't conform.
I mean, there, there's statements here.
It, it doesn't conform to the, uh, it doesn't conform to all the setbacks. It doesn't, uh.
And lot coverage, it's only one point one percent, but again, it's got to be fifteen percent, not twenty-eight. So, you know, it's just something to keep in mind as far as the level of variance being required.
Greg, when you go and check this place out, when you check out any place, are you also looking at like fire code issues and violations?
Yeah, so, so we normally do camp inspections in the spring. This was built over the winter, uh, and, uh, we saw them working and we went back and stopped them. Uh, we did allow them to finish weathering it in, I should say, so that the building didn't get ruined until we sorted it out. Um, in other words, I, I allowed them to, out of respect for what they did, stopping them, I just allowed them to, to finish the roof and, and weather it in just so that the building wasn't destroyed for sitting for months, so.
I understand about the fires, that there was like a low coming electrical wire right past the firing line.
Okay, is there's, uh, there is a requirement for, uh, I think ten feet for wires inside a, a development. It's not the same as it is on a residential road. So, uh.
There are statements here, I think, the first paragraph, and the owner is going to use it before you get your building will be on the side of the future. That's conjecture.
Oh, you're talking about the other building that's, that they agreed to take down previously?
Yeah.
Where are you reading these minutes from? Oh, from Glenn's, okay, gotcha.
So to say things, you know, how do you know, I mean, it's guaranteed, it's just making, uh, it's, it's a, the fact statement, um, the grandfather piece. I don't know where that comes from.
So, I don't either. So they said that there was a, there were, they said that there was a unit already there where they rebuilt this one. I have photo, I have, I have photos back from twenty-third, twenty-five years ago and there is no structure from twenty-five years ago. That's as far back as our imagery goes. So there was no structure there twenty-five years ago, in this spot, in this location. Yeah, they claimed that there was a, a house there once before, a building there once before and it was grandfathered, yeah. That structures, the grandfather loses its, after two years, two years, from the time a building is removed to, it's, it's a grandfather, our grandfather is two years. So.
Please read that.
Last one is Fallsburg Holdings. That is the development, development right down the road here called High Ridge. They call it High Ridge. It's, it's, uh, right before Stewart's on the left-hand side. It's the combination of modular, they're mostly modulars all the way around. Two colors all the way around, so. Uh, yes, probably. Uh, it's, it's right down here on the left. It's all dirt. It's got a rope, you use big circle houses. It's got a row of bigger houses on the back, which we sent back to the planning board for the bigger houses in the back. Yeah, so, so the, all our developments, almost all our developments have, the, the people who built roofs over their porches. It's just so they're, so they're not, uh, all their porches, they have a, so they have a nice seating area out on their porch. So they started, they came to me for permits to build the porches. A lot of times they build the porches while they're building the developments. The original, the original plans for this development didn't have the porches figured in on the original, on the original calculations, didn't. So when they went to the planning board, so they put in permits to, to start doing porches over there and I told them that the problem I had, it's the porches are legal to add on, but the, the, the decks are legal, but porch roofs are also a legal thing to add, but there's a lot coverage. The lot has a maximum lot coverage and the, the problem here was the, the lot coverage calculation for this property is twenty-five percent. When they did, when they came to the planning board for the project, they were at twenty-four point some percent, I think twenty-four and a half percent. It counts as impervious surface. So in order for them to do, so they could do, if they did half the houses with covered porches, they would reach their lot coverage maximum. So technically I'm supposed to allow them to build up to their lot coverage. So, but after they build a half of them, the other half of the people are going to come in for permits and I have to deny them. They're like, how come this guy can get it, but I can't. So I told them, I don't want you building any until maybe we can increase the lot coverage one percent or whatever, whatever the calculation, they, they needed to figure it out. So they, they came back with us with a, with a, with a conservative lot coverage that would, that would allow all the units to have their, their little covered roofs on their thing, which wasn't a very, to me, it was a very small ask to raise the lot coverage, the small percentage. This way I wasn't having fights with people for the next five years trying to do something that their neighbor already had, so, for aesthetic reasons.
Well, there are all that, it's not like, uh, a porch is going to be in more interest like that.
There, there's, yeah, there's no life, there's no fire separations issue with the porch roofs.
And sorry, you're saying that this was, that the planning board said no decks and now.
No, 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 the planning, no, 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 the planning board approved the buildings with decks, open decks. So some of the projects they, some of the projects they proposed the roofs over the decks when they're building the development. This, this they didn't, but they decided to want to do them. F, people were like, oh, can we get, can we get the roofs while the builders are in here? So they, they started, just they, they just did two, like on a model to show people, but I stopped them because I said, I can't, if you do them all, if you do half, I'll only let you do half and then the other people are going to get jealous. But, but what, we have another development that's similar, Point of Woods, where they are out of lock coverage completely, but, and nobody had any. So it wasn't like it was anything new, but then the people started buying those like tent, awning tents because they don't consider them as permanent structures. So you end up with those pipe tenty looking, to me, that's, that's not, uh, I, I honestly, I would rather see the, the. Correct. So they, a lot of the other people do that, the other, well, there is different options, but other people, some people can't afford that. I don't know what the situation is, but the, the, the other development we have up the street has a lot of these tenty looking awnings because they're not considered permanent structures. So, uh, honestly, in my opinion, I think from an architectural standpoint, I would rather see the wood roof frame, uh, but I don't want to fight with people a year from now, six months from now, that half their neighbors have them and half can't, so, uh, so.
Alright.
That's why I, I asked him to come, I asked him to come to the board to try to, to, to deal with it, so.
Mainly also have time for it, when I'm doing a piece though.
Yeah. Which if, if he has his approval tonight, he's going to do all the same, all finished, all at once and done. Yeah, if you saw that, that there's the two units down by the street, if you saw them, they had the two porch roofs over them, they're all going to look the same with the porch roofs. I think it adds aesthetics to the house. They have, they have roofs that were, they were, they were, they were brought, they went back to the planning board for those units. Those are the owners of the development. They asked for some bigger houses. They also, they also started framing those. I stopped them. I told them, you can't build bigger than what you were approved for. They went back to the planning board. The planning board gave them their blessing. We had the architectural consultant review them and they gave them the blessing to do that ridge of houses a little different than the rest. So.
See it's going.
Yeah, alright, alright.
Alright, welcome everyone to this meeting of twentieth of June, uh, the General Assembly of Appeals in Fallsburg. Be aware that we will continue to review applications on the merits based on the sound of the town, the subdivision fund and other applicable laws and regulations. And a planning board approval does not however guarantee fruits of water soon certified by our common fund works due to the current, they expect the future construction, but one pool, which we discuss in open Philip Collins. So I'll have May nineteen, one, two, our water system, that, that application accepted as a night based on what are then the existing passing circumstances. Each application may, may, or expect, the town will, Fallsburg Water System Systems will include a review by the town engineer. Will be guided by the town's engineers, expects for fees and dollars for the town's water system. The public health, safety, or fair and the public will, available water system system information is posted at the Department of Works for Public Review. The town is taking all reasonable measures to get the water super easy, but it's important, we'll make it fast as we can scale developments. But, yes, before we go on to, uh, open up the continuing public hearings from the last meeting, um, I believe we're not, uh, we've had a chance to review the. um, I believe we're not, uh, we've had a chance to review your minutes of the last meeting. And, uh, what are these people who, or, uh, we, uh, I found a very, very difficult call. Um, I don't know if we have somebody, uh, I don't think some people probably know that, because I don't understand that. Um, but, uh.
One motion to approve by the other people. Stop, but please clear. Second.
Okay, approved. I already got, yeah, I have a vote. Okay, so everyone, uh. Okay, another second, sorry. Um, now, we, we're going to continue our discussions on, uh, five of public hearings. And, uh, we, uh, we've opened, we've kept it open to the public on all these five points, out of these five issues. And we'll start with Irvington Estates.
Good evening, most happy in our, for government states, government states, it's an offer from Monmouth County, and they have an extension for somebody who has other parents, they can, they, they care the parents. Um, requires to be guaranteed, their intention is over twenty, it's twenty percent, so twenty-five percent increase. The lot coverage, they want to extend from thirty, why not thirty-three? And the separations, they want to minimize them, the required separation. The separation right now are seventy feet. And with this extension, you can get the house on the angle, it would be maybe in this, in the front by X. See. Um. And then I think, would you ask her how it looks with twenty-five percent? Nothing that the plan, uh, the thing in eighteen chapters, you do, and sort of to make it, if you want to create twenty-seven feet. With this plan of that time.
This is the proposal that would be, uh, they want.
So they don't need a variance for the size of the expansion. They still need a variance for, for other things, they need separation variances and lot coverage variances. So, the, the, uh, the. Okay.
We're still requesting.
Okay, good.
Wouldn't the lot coverage be less than thirty-three if you're more than two feet? March. Or very, very big or thirteen hundred feet?
You have anyone to represent?
Mary Adams.
You have to come, I'm sorry, but you have to come up closer to the fronts of the people from the, that's fine, you're good there. Thank you.
I guess I'm not totally clear about why it's happening, so you that have been asking something, then showed something that you didn't, then required of there.
The, we're requesting three variances, one of the variances are for, if we wanted to let enough extent the bungalow more than twenty-five percent, what is now existing house, structure, unit. Um, she had passed the last meeting to see what will look like the plans, we extended twenty-five percent to twenty.
Oh, alright, and so you did that?
So I showed her a copy of what the plan would look like.
If you do twenty-five, which is within their right business, but the other, um, variances.
The other two variances he would have to gain would also be to build the same thing. The, the bungalow colony is over, it's, it's a non-conforming bungalow colony, it falls under the non-conforming bungalow colony. Uh, and, uh, it is, but it, it was not built to bungalow.
Yeah.
It was, it was been at thirty-some percent of lot coverage for, it's been at thirty, I believe it's been at thirty, what, what's it about, what is it, Moisha? Thirty-two point nine percent as it was existing for a long time. So, for adding this little additional unit, it's like queen of one percent additional lot coverage, but it's still something we have to get a variance.
And it's still maybe on fire.
No, that's another variance he's getting.
So for that, we should, this, obviously. Um, we're going to put up fireproof, a fire wall separation, we can try our fire rated wall. For that, it's a requirement in town, it's in West End.
So what's this?
We have sixteen feet or twenty-five.
Okay. And I assume that is safe.
We have options, if, if the, if the zoning board wishes to grant the variance, we do have fireproof options for, for people to, fireproof units to make it safe to the fire code. The, the, the building separation codes we have for the town of Fallsburg are more stricter, more strict than New York State's fire code. Uh, we have local, local zoning that restricts it even more than, than, uh, than the state does, so, uh. This, this may fall in, it might pass by state standards, but it doesn't pass our local, our local, uh, fire code. So, we do give options for a two-hour firewall separation design, which they can build when they're building their additions or structures to comply with the fire safety. Anybody from Zoom like to speak about Irvington, raise your hand? Alright. We can move on, Rabbi.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the next case. Um. Is, uh, Mayor Rosenberg? No, no, we have to, we have two more, two more, two more, very active, meaning we'll have a, uh, this quick recap to decide if we're going to continue doing the public hearings upfront, or if we want to do the public hearing before each matter, the way we've been in the fire, so, well, everyone hang on for a couple minutes. Discuss. And if you, they, we, so we have two variants, early, we hold, we, we use variants. Or which we said everything you can, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we need the mayor of Rosenberg.
Yeah, this, just means open the public hearing on this form, it's very, it's a new application, it's not the same.
It's not the same as if it's not a vacancy now or a, a configuration.
Yeah, yeah, we have the mayor of Rosenberg. Um, last come over here, last come, we have the four needs, the, uh, one have a, we work every four months. That letterman is back here tonight, um, probably, uh, we have a question happening there. I think I'm fishing having that is six hundred square feet, which is half of public square feet. Think that we very, very difficult, uh, public square, but structure there, permanent structure there. Um, the town, rent out there, it's supposed to have, it's, it's not going to be there. Um, D W, we're not going through there, so we have to even in front of something. The. Right now, for, you say, you get the, for getting any proof, it's, there's, uh, there was terrible, but maybe, uh, I'm passing that, you know, glittering, I'm not here, email this, um, it's fixed up the property, we have treaty. Maybe that we requested that lose the whole front of the property, hopefully this way to get to their structures, they're there, they're structured there, and they have easy structure from the property, so. Um, he gave them extra, the, yeah, a few months extra square feet from the property that the trucks made few turns. Um, D W request that we don't have any structure, five feet of their lines, and only possible rate to have, elevations to have, uh, six hundred square, kind of trucks that could be moved. If he is, you now live in there for more than thirty days. Um, is it just a place that come up for fishing and hunting and not?
Where is, um, so, he, that he, he works. We can help with it.
The doctor.
Greg, uh, hunting cabin, wire sled, that could be put up on blocks.
There's no really, there's, there's no, uh, we don't have very strict, uh, strict zoning for hunting and fishing cabins, uh. You have the hunting and fishing cabin zone right in front of you or no? I'll find it for you in a second, uh, you can keep talking while I find it for you.
Of course, sweet.
Of course, she even prepared, no, that's.
It's a big one.
It's walking about the property, not, so that after the walk in the road.
I think last time we talked about the fence that you say is putting up already, or up? Uh, that we, I asked if they could have a, a gate? Is there a gate?
Yes. They open up the gate.
I mean, a gate, they're going up for a vehicle or for a person?
They're going to have to D W requested that they should be able to drive vehicles to the back of the ground, because they have. Yeah. They have.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's not being, uh, proposed, and what was previous. So, uh, Greg, this is, uh, directly across, uh, from the waterfall of the Oversight Pavilion.
No, this is, this is, yeah, so it's across the river where the overlook pavilion is, directly across the river, river, river. The, the, the property is where the, the rock is where you, everybody hangs, used to hang out to look at the falls, yes. He owns now the rock with the falls, yes. So, it's part of this property.
For that, we're, many, seven, eight, four, ten, we go up to, on the property, and we need to add something there, the smoking boat, not the, that's.
Well. Based on the, the wooden bird.
I think, I'm not totally clear about where it is, this is the one that's in, I, I was here last. And, um, near Stewart's, yeah, in that area.
Opposite side of the street.
Across from Sprinkles, yes, yeah, across there.
If you were standing at Sprinkles back deck, you would look down across the river at the property. It's kind of tucked down in the, it's cut, yeah. It's down behind our town sewer pump, that's, there's a town sewer pump that sits down below a development, West Park. Yeah.
So, I, I, I mean, I'm not the, it sounds like you're, remember six hundred square foot, uh, structure, because, um, that's all like, you really, you have there, it will bring some, perhaps less littering, because there are people active on the property, I'm not so sure about that, but hopefully, um, it'll keep it safer maybe, because it will keep people from going into the river there. Um, right, okay, so, um, but was this the same one that where there was manning?
Correct, yes.
Child will comes up with ten of those.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I felt fine about that, the part I was worried about was that we were going to make a change. It was the after zoning.
No, we're not changing the zoning, we're, we're, he's asking for a use variance now, to allow it. To allow it.
If that property gets sold to another person, it still have the same requirements?
The use variance would follow the property, correct, Dylan?
Yes.
So they can't change that and decide to do a two, sort of.
No.
Okay. Right. Okay. So, all right, that was my concern, that they might, might change with the newer, it sounds like, uh, the old.
Anybody?
Anybody else from?
Anybody from Zoom like to speak on this? Hold on one second, I just added somebody, I just thought, say.
Because the mayor was, um, the first you want to business on.
Yes. Alright, nobody on Zoom is raising their hand? We don't normally do it this way, but this is procedurally the correct way to do it, like Dylan said. And Dylan said tonight, we're going to, after the meeting, we're going to see if we vote on, on doing it the way we used to do it.
Yeah, I mean, the key of the public minutes says, that has a flow. This is returned on day third, so either have them starting at seven P M or just at one at seven.
Okay, so now we go for the next one with it, Norman plus four.
Oh, right, we, we, uh, the, uh, the board, the nine board, they're, they're, they're. And they are. Um, I think so, uh, that's, if it happens, it's a fourteen, both separation, that would mean it's like in the neighbors that. It is not really possible to chop off the foot because the foundations are there, and going with the, move over a foot is to move over the whole foundations, which is not, you know, feasible.
The gap is built on a foundation.
Yes, maybe their son of boobs are falling into the ground. Um. Those are going to have, you have to move over them, getting the holes, I think, and move. You have to dig up those holes and put down new ones.
Yeah.
Um, there is, we're on fire safety, we have a fire expiration, there is a fire action director, cross the street, and that, to compete away itself, yes, by action, cross the street, um. The deck is similar square footage to many of the neighbors, many neighbors built further back, that built outside this house. Right now, that is not structurally safe, it does need to, it's a little bit, however, is not going to, so yes, a building permit or, yeah, some sort of, building permit. And that's your question for, thanks for, to them.
As far as speaking, I don't know. I didn't see.
Well, there was discussion of actually, well, you might not be able to, uh, I'm allowed to speak on this. Uh, to, no.
No, yeah, and the pump. He should be answering questions.
So that's a very close case that could happen. I think, what you said, um, yeah, I, I, I driven about fifty feet, across, very across the street, which is about fifty feet away, just very close in case something happens.
To be there, yes.
And then you would be able to protect the walls. Yeah, so because the walls are not reinforced. The vaults are at the required distance, thirty-one feet, vaults are. Right. Meaning that they are at the required duration.
Maybe online like to speak? Raise your hand, use the raise your hand symbol. Nobody?
Okay, now we'll be, oh, yes, that's. I've been waiting for this one.
Yes.
Central Park, I'm just going to have never keep saying this thing. Greg. Um, let me make my first, the part, quality part, I think, smaller, you know, you're, I sound like. Oh, nicely, I'll hopefully clarify all that.
Hey guys. Long time no see.
Um, so, up and up, here's, I'm in Central Park, I'm, it's the, it's a bungalow colony on forty-two, going out, self over towards, uh, Old Falls. And they say A L Port and Sons are on the, the south side of the property here. Um, there's thirty-two seasonal summer units in the colony. Back in two thousand sixteen, uh, the owners got approval to, uh, knock down a four-unit building, which is the orange middle building on, coverage there. Uh, that had used two, three, four, five, three, four, five, six, they have full cyclical to play where knocked down that, that four-unit building, and built two duplex buildings, one duplex and a footprint that building, and one duplex, and next to it, and what was basketball court. Um, they said the last year, started a duplex building, but instead of those two there, the world was got, they were in charge, got down, filed up on it. They started building it at the back of the property, in between two other existing private, like, duplex in the back. Um, I do have a survey map in two thousand six by, uh, probably all, sure there, it was a bungalow in that location, exact same location, which was taken down, I think it was a fire situation years ago or something, so that bungalow was taken down, big, boy, there's, anyway, they built a bungalow. That stopped by building department, a violation, and was told to come. That stopped by building department violation and was told to come to the zoning board to address several variant issues and then they had to go back to the planning board, subject to. Have a zoning board for a modified site plan approval. So just to summarize the, uh, the variances, uh, saying briefly. Uh, one was not, was expansion of non-conforming bungalow colony, um. There's thirty, there was thirty two units by adding eastern. Now this four unit building has not been taken down here, obviously, so. Uh, by adding the duplex, it went from thirty four, thirty two units to thirty four units, expansion of the bungalow colony. However, the owner said he's gonna currently, they still intend to take down this old four unit building. Once they get financing, hopefully in the future. So he said he'll currently close off two units in the four unit building, something to the building department verifying or whatever. Then we're back to thirty two original units. That kind of negates the area. Lock them, tear them down, whatever they have to do soon, so nobody can occupy them.
So they had the money to build and not the money to take down.
Essentially, they don't have the money to take down and rebuild the other, like, yes, that's what, that's what they're talking. They're getting financing for, for the, the, demolishing that, having a little bit like. But as I said, they currently, somebody who had with the building department decides get rid of two units in the four unit building, go back to the thirty two. You know, density and that would basically take away that area variance for that, I would assume, probably what the council says. So, um. That was one, that was one barrier. That was the expansion of the, of the, uh, bungalow colony. The second was the expansion of lot coverage. The. It's the prior lot coverage of this colony was twenty eight point five percent. That's been there since before zoning was enacted by the town years ago. By adding this duplex here, um, it increased to twenty nine point six percent, or the one, one point one percent increase in lot coverage by adding the building over there. Area variance required on that, get back to that in a second. Um, the third one was a separation. The town requires, we have need fire flow twenty five for separation between buildings. Uh, this building had a sixteen foot separation on both sides, the base of buildings. The, uh, owner, when they were building, I think, were aware that they, they constructed those two sidewalls. Uh, with two hour fire rating, which is required, we're less than twenty five feet up to the point they got stopped. So. Uh, what's there now has a two hour fire rating, those two sidewall, but there was still need an area variance, because it's less than twenty five feet. And the last one was, um, the rear yard. Setback is on a plan that were approved in two thousand sixteen, the site plan showed a fifty foot rear yard setback. Uh, this building is built, has a ten foot rear yard setback, which actually all other buildings, the rear yard roll between ten and twenty for setbacks also, but. Forget about that for a second. The existing building has a ten foot setback. Um, so area variance required for that. We did. Get a letter that was put to the board and neighbor of rural states. So they're willing, I call it formal growth, say. Um, they're willing to sell a portion of property, uh, to this applicant. To achieve the fifty foot setback if necessary. And that will also give them some more acreage, so that would bring the lot coverage back to roughly twenty eight point five percent they started with originally. So. By then first thing that land, that's another area variance that could be eliminated.
Doesn't have the money to destroy one building. And now we have the money to buy it alone?
I think they're making a deal with not much money is changing hands, zero point two acres. It's really not much land.
But if you took down the buildings that he's supposed to take down, then he would have the right. If he didn't build it.
If he took down the, no, if he took down the four unit building, he built the two duplexes.
If he took down the building, he didn't build that.
Right.
He would have the right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have time now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so again, if, if they. What, what I'm trying to do is eliminate some of the possible area variances. Like I said, by acquiring this piece of property here, that could throw the rear yard setback variance. It would probably get rid of the lot coverage area variance. And then also by closing off two units currently here, we'll get rid of the, uh, build an expansion of bungalow colony variance. So possibly real three area variance by time one of the ports. Hope you know that.
Okay.
Well, matter. Public comments and. No, that means Zoom.
Maybe on Zoom like to comment on, uh. Central Park?
Where is this?
Done, we're going to going out south over, the Alport and Sons. Same, same side of the room.
Yes, it borders Alport's property. All right. We can move on. Bye bye.
The next one. Uh, is, um.
Fallsburg Hall.
Fallsburg Hall.
Good evening, my name is Joe Call with, uh, Edward Development for this project. Uh, this is what's known as Fall with Colneys. Uh, the new name for the project is Siren. With Siren. Uh, so this, this project happened a few years ago by the planning board and now they've got, they're all prioritized for the summer. Um, of course, they'll get the sales.
Working, keep working, pass it through.
Uh, as, as Greg said in the work session, there's a couple of people who wanted to have, uh. Uh, portions, you know, moves over their decks. And, uh, came out that it's gonna be an issue with lot coverage potentially, everyone's gonna want that. Greg suggested that instead of piecemealing this and asking you every time, please hit the bad guy, the homeowners. We'd rather come with a master plan to show all of them as for the potential route. So that's essentially what we're showing on this, uh, site plan. Uh, the numbers for the lot coverage that would be for if all the decks would be covered. That number comes down to thirty point seven five percent.
What is it?
I mean.
Very exciting.
Sure. So. Um, the way it used to be done a couple of years ago, when these projects have been approved, were different than how it's been done, how it's been done nowadays with a lot of coverage, uh, percentage. Um, so the lot coverage back then was at twenty four point some percent. But the way that we do the lot coverage now, it was probably about twenty seven or twenty eight percent. So we're technically going about like twenty seven, twenty eight to the twenty point seven five.
I wonder if, and when we took this plan to the, for the approval process. Obviously, some of the, what part of the approval process is you have to provide. Architecture review board, you know, photos of what you plan to do. And a number of the actions that we provided at the time to the finding board were obviously with these covered decks. And we obviously took that further to the customer base without understanding and progress of our attention. Now we're very close, so based on the.
Thank you.
To be in a position, we all free this one product, fourteen people and. Twenty four might want it, puts us in a bad place and actually penetrating were built before. I think twelve were built before Greg brought our attention. So this is really an opportunity for us to clean it up, obviously what's done already. And also to have a good chat moving forward where everyone, if they ever decide to do it, naturally have to come back and back this way.
Each individual client would have to come back.
Saying, so we want to try to have something taken. Taken care of that the building partner knows that everyone, if anybody would come to them, they know that. And for more of that group, I know this is called lot coverage, but. There's always the idea that really as long as there's a hole over the decks. That raining water and all the kinds of water is still on under these decks. It's not like it's blacktop area. So I know in the legal term still called impervious areas. But really this is somewhat of a gray area, though it's not the true, true impervious area. Because you'll have on everyone's deck, even if it's a copper deck, there's always gonna be some of the rainwater, you know, accumulating around here as well. It's not like an exact, you know, like, like I said, like blacktop.
Anybody?
I have a question, uh, Mary Adams, Mary, so please.
Yeah.
Um. So there were some built without.
No, no, they were, uh, they were, they were approved, but I can't only approve so many.
So, okay.
And I'm at the point where I can't approve anymore. So, so what do I do? Do I, do I? I, I, I find, I total up the math to where he has to stop and then. Then after everybody moves in there, the other people are gonna want them and then I'll have to bring back one person at a time here for extra point. It was a per, couple percent to, to be able to do them for all the roofs.
There's no guarantee that it'll ever be max, maxed out.
But that's why I said a potential.
It's not, it's not guaranteed because a lot of people want this. They'd rather have sunlight on, on. But in, in case. With any worst case, and in a worst case, then every single people person is like, I want to have a full cover, then I can. And, you know, a lot of that, just I love in business, you know, people who want decks, lot covered decks, most of them don't elect a full cover deck. And we're trying, in our application, is taking the case scenario where everyone wanted a full cover deck and they're both only. A part of that. So the likelihood of this ever really playing itself out is. I'm not saying impossible, they're very unlikely. But. Yeah, that's why, that's exactly why we're doing that here, last day, changing library area.
Anybody on Zoom would like to speak?
There's a lot of faces that. New public area.
It's no rope is there.
Yeah.
And now it's figured to be first to, right? So. Some of these, I think we're gonna have more of a month, we might want to keep it open so we can get. I don't, there's one, I think, you can all, to close everything. Um, so if you want to close the volunteering, but as we do each other matters. You know, portion. Decide whether I want to keep it open and it's gonna be back next month or to close there. We just have to make sure to do that.
Can we base it on? The. And will we?
No, you can. I mean, because don't they have had a chance to ask their court, what's the door? We, you share those questions that might actually show the level of, of, you know, the distance we have actually.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, so we'll go to Erbington. Um, we'll ask questions. Any comments?
I just wanna say, I mean, first of all, for the proposal that was each within the twenty five percent exit and chairman, I think that given that's a possibility. I, I don't know that it's even worth entertaining as the first item that we discussed. Well, like twenty eight percent. And instead of the other two firsts.
I'm like, so the other two?
I still feel, um. As we talked about weeks, two weeks ago. That this is one of those kind of, why are we allowed one unit to make this modification? Why does an additional group needed debt? Like, there's a lot of questions for me in this that don't seem to have the necessity. That it would take for us to go through the criteria and say this makes sense to me. Especially because we don't, um, especially when it comes to these variants that would be, uh, required. We don't have the application materials required. We don't have the, uh, evidence of financial hardship. We don't have the other, uh, the other criteria, so that works.
Financial hardship would also probably fall to caregiving issues.
Yeah, we need to see proof of.
Right, that we have to see those, you know what, that's a cost. Um, why is there a paper asking you behind? And I mean, even though it, there is a logic. But I think we have to be convinced that there is no other way around.
And. That's, that's right.
That's, that's our diligence with these variants. If that portion of, you know, we can't just, there's a high bar, um, that has to be met with a, with experience. And we therefore have to have all our support, leadership. From you. So be able to, why those, those other differences. Are made sense and, and they can't be achieved by.
Do they, do you have any questions or are you just going to?
I said. Well, we don't have any prevention.
On the first, on the two area variances. Is that? Yeah.
Brief vote on this.
Because.
We all three have to be in cohesion with each other.
So because it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. Any, any variance, even if normally we would be inherited variance to this variant, so I'll be going through that same criteria.
So you think, you think you want stringent, uh, test? And then we fast slap the other ones?
Yes.
Well, we already, like, there's the four criteria. We already know that. The hardship is self-created and. Um, the ownership, then the one that changes that sign unique and, you know, there's no chart. So those are already, we have the criteria that we set.
But we're not financial.
So just. We don't have the financials, but that is also. We, we requested the month, did we not?
Oh, no. Yeah, we were questioned the last, uh, last meeting and this is from, uh. Last, it was area variance, it's there. The area variance and that was just requested previous variants. Um, there were no natural, um, we're not actually supposed to have the area taxes last meeting. Yeah, and then we had a discussion by the counties digging back two thirty nines for areas and variances for non-conforming uses. So, I mean, I. If, if you need more time to collect the, the information and everything. Yeah, it's the same application, but it's been switched over to the area or from area to use. So it would maybe work to come.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
I'm moving to you suddenly. So the. The thirty nine, I thought we only got one too. This one was just from the last.
Yeah, this, so this basically, I think they had a new person at the town that's been. The two thirty nines, anytime they go forward for an uncontrolled use, if it's an area variance, they said it's, it's a use variance and. Because it's not performing, so it's wouldn't. While it is an area variance because it has to do, you know, setbacks and things, it has to go through the experience test.
If there are anybody looking trying to, to, to.
Yeah.
Do we, do we want to request the financials that didn't vote on full information?
I'd like to see first one. Uh, so that we can actually satisfy these variants that we satisfy the other two. That's another fact, but it might not.
Really, the good little comment to make would be that. If the guy or woman actually shows up in the meetings and says, because you're gonna need a lot of. Like them saying, sure, have like a letter or something like. But because they're already people have used there, it's really well, you know, he's glad for the monies, you know, which is the reasonable return. Don't want to know. How the hardship was not self-created, um. You know, how it's not you, how it's unique to other situations and. Then it's not gonna.
The hardship was self, was created due to the fact that parents are older and. They may not take care of them. Um, that's where the.
I do remember, I think at a different meeting, it was that panel. But I guess it was switched between the three meetings.
So there's only going to have that many meetings one. Um, it's the family with the parents, right? The parents of the parents are family and.
I, I remember at one point it's like.
That the children are. Caregivers are gonna be, they gotta be able to go with them.
I feel like I remember one thing, it's, uh, that.
The larger.
Yeah, it was like the family and the kids coming as opposed to in age sleeping etcetera, who are like, like a little bit maybe or something.
We have had other patients like that too, where. We've got a request because Tommy said, so very difficult. The family going bigger thing. You know, it's, it's already seven times six foot deep trap of it. Uh, I. Uh, I'm, I'm serious. Uh, as to this is the only way to take care of the person. You know, um. I mean, I'm not, I, what I meant to say is that. As even all the units and all of the developments, we can be thinking of a lot of.
So I, that's why I.
The aging, the aging population think is someone that's gonna rear its. In its merciful head. Uh, on many occasions. So again. When we think of, of master plans, um, the demographic, it becomes important. To kind of see who's living where with what kind of deficits. Uh, because I see this, this is, you know, you look at the. It might have a new shoe, but it's an old development and therefore people have been it for a long time.
I think we should, we should request the. I think we should, we should request the the use area, uh, area, the user it's, uh, application, so with full permission.
They might actually give us a template to then revision others that might down the budget.
Yeah.
So we can do things in a more consolidated way. We don't want to smell, because that doesn't, it's not about us only, it's a problem for the other people, who then have to wait it out.
So I think we should, I think that.
Yeah, so we should keep it open.
We'll close, we'll close the public.
Close the public, but we wait for more information. Okay, now we move to, um.
We have to go down.
Um, Mayor Rosenberg.
Make a motion.
Oh, we have to make some motions to, uh, to close the public hearing and.
If they bring you with the nation, we really want the public to find out that.
That's true, well, that's true.
Nobody came tonight, so.
I think you should keep it open.
I think it's.
Cross out.
But that's just not a matter.
Yeah.
Okay, Mayor Rosenberg, um. That was around tomorrow. So hunting was actually, I think that was actually started like a. Yeah, we don't even want. Okay, so it was the, uh, now we have.
Two concerns about that, yeah. One is that it seems to me that the owner is an LLC. So I just wanna confirm that there's no intention for this to be used as like an Airbnb, as a place for other people to visit, that this is for personal use.
If they would like to use it for short-term rentals, that would be something that they're gonna have to have a permanent front building property. And one person to use as a short-term rental and.
But I would think that that should be addressed here tonight at the board, so they set a condition to it.
They don't have any plans to that.
Okay.
So why do you let those? People prefer to buy their own business.
Well, yeah, they can own how they choose. I imagine knowing that we're spending a number of lawsuits on the property, that's.
So maybe on the.
The nature of the problem. Well, I think in the presentation earlier, they're spending a number of lawsuits and droughts and things, so I think it's probably this.
In your self gets the.
Yeah.
Exposure.
For me, I'm open to this, these variants, as long as, uh, as long as there is a condition that this is never used as a short-term rental, it's never used as something that can be, um, that can be sold out just for the exact reasons that we talked about before, when it comes to liability, when it comes to this type of property.
Because they.
Well, it becomes, it it's a different kind of fish, right? People are using, are using property that is zoned appropriately in those ways, it's it's not a push habit. Right, like there's, there's.
So the LLC does not necessarily imply that it's going to be used for purposes, it was just a way for it to get yourself to get steady.
They have no plans now, uh, there for tomorrow.
Yes, but we're not holding on the next part.
We should be able to put it conditions of the use variants, right?
Right.
So we can address the concerns, we can address everybody's concerns with the conditions. Uh.
The the use variants making it a cat, it's, it's, it would have to then, does it have to still have a foundation or?
No, 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 there's no. We're really looking for use variant, just for the zone, just for the zone. So we're in, we're in a R-zone and the hunting fishing, if it was an REC zone, he'd be able to do it if it was.
Hunting and fishing cabins shall place no less than a hundred feet for the.
All right, and we cut away to you guys, thanks, all right, and a hundred feet from the edge of road pavement, they shall have more area between six hundred feet, eight hundred square feet, depending on the zone in which the property is located, cabins shall not exceed eight hundred square feet. May not be occupied for more than thirty second days in a calendar year, but no cabin shall be located within a hundred feet of the lake. So it has to be even. Or, uh, and as far as the foundation. Or just everything there pretty much, it's a six hundred square foot. What you can have right now, which is, I've been eight hundred, six hundred now, um, it's more than a hundred feet away from the river. That the property, and because D W has the front of the road, D W does not need access to that. And D W will, D W was there recently, took down some trees that went the way they got, uh, they got there is many else, so he can't build. So the road. I think it's an improvement, I mean, I think there will prevent some of the sort of behavior that they question now, but having friends still.
So. Right, he's gonna need a permit to build that.
Uh, he's, we'll, we'll give him a permit for hunting and fishing cabin, correct, which will never.
Whether it's a hundred, that he meets all the criteria.
Correct, correct.
Of the setbacks and the.
Correct, correct. We give a permit for hunting and fishing cabins, we do not issue a certificate of occupancy to hunting and fishing cabin. We give a certificate of compliance to hunting and fishing cabin, and that's just that it conforms to the town code for hunting and fishing cabins.
And what do you agree that with thirty days? It can't be occupied for more than thirty days.
In consecutive.
You can't live there.
So you can.
So you could leave for a day. Kind of similar to where.
Who we start. This is not a home, he's not coming up to the summer, he's not coming up with this property for that. This is a property that go there for weekends, go there for vacation for a day, go there for, it's not a property that you can be living there and.
Until he decides.
So that was town outones that do not allow, that's what we got into that.
I, I think at the last meeting, the applicant mentioned he has a, a full-time residence in Fallsburg as well.
Yeah.
Um, as far as the neighborhood goes, most of the surrounding areas are a C-zone, right? And was it just this side of the river that's residential or?
Across the road, from the northern part area, there is, um, hard to see. And also regarding the, but it's a very hard setback. That.
We still need a two thirty nine to update the plan, no?
We do have to ask for a move.
You can't vote.
I need to ask for this.
My other question was, in your application, you did say something about, I think, eighty feet away from the water, where a hundred feet is required, so you're saying that because the D W said something, it's already more than okay, we should, it's regarding feet?
Yeah, that's a D W, um, that was a hundred feet away from the river, half the road, eighty feet away from the river, half the road.
Okay, so it's more than eighty feet away, it's more than a hundred feet away from the river?
It is.
Right, so when you're adding. There is for that.
Yeah, so it was.
No, so that's what I'm seeing, I'm seeing it in here, but hoping along the agenda.
Right.
This agenda, see, it says, request use variants, that we all hunting cabin and residential don't, it doesn't say that you also need one. It's for the eight, right, the eighty feet away from the water, one a hundred feet.
But so here is actually, we can, you probably know a huge variance, so we don't resonate. And then we've announced it, very very well there.
Yeah, I think it wasn't what in the.
Oh, it's not.
It's, it will be. It will be.
I think you, you would have to vote on, vote on that, right? We would have to vote on both. Paper that specifics that I've seen, whoever has to be. The point is.
Oh.
And then for the use variants, the two, uh, we do need a little bit more like proof, we're going to request this for use variants, we need to also see this for.
It's that try to high bar, you know, all the hardships. All the events on.
I think the easements are the biggest thing in this property.
Yeah.
Uh, honestly, the, uh. I think this is the best scenario for this property, because I wouldn't wanna see a permanent house on this property and then try to figure out the fighting with the town of the easements, like, and access to the easement, so, uh.
Great, you put me around it before we hit the two thirty nine?
Since the, excuse me, the first, the first one recommends disapproval, so if it does come back with disapproval, you have to have a super majority um, to override it, so that would be, you know, lots.
Good, should we keep it open because we're gonna be voting on it, the, the, like, the last one, because we're, we're not voting on it this time, we want the comment up and.
We still need information for the last one.
Yeah.
Let's bundle it together.
So we'll keep the public.
Yes.
And we'll talk about their.
One for the water, I can see it.
The third variance, so the third, uh.
Time free.
Time free. Time free was. Three, uh, three is, I need, um. And we look to.
No, that's.
This is the one you built the deck in.
That is not the fact, uh, what J P doing that term. So whether it's disapproval, um. Whether this was updated to.
Saying that it has to be cut, but.
They not really found a.
I have a colored picture, I don't know, I have a, if you wanna pass that around, that's what it looks like, I guess.
Yeah, and.
I don't know what the picture he submitted is, this is out of our violation picture. Okay.
Remember that I have two reasons that is this too close and also being that too close to the gate over there, speaking of the front gate, um, I think I'm correct.
That was the step, that was the steps, the steps came down right to the gate.
Um, I'm kind of not a regulator, he that. He drove the car stepped because the, that was there on fifty wide. I'm proud of that.
Well, I always have a problem, I always will, I don't know, people build it out there. And I think the only way to cure that is, is, uh, is a drastic punishment. Because word gets around, and maybe people stop building without permits. So I see sonotubes, they could stay there, you could put bushes around there. I thought cutting a foot off to get, if they could comply. Or could you make a smaller gap or less gap?
Look back off the picture that. Are you with the screen?
Dinner or less?
It's a very long gap. He's gotta cut the whole length of that wall, that, but it's, it's hard to fill that.
So maybe I'll go there, some of the footage, if they go further back, it's not a problem. So it doesn't screw the character, it needs to be there.
That's a story.
But it's. Then yes.
Like, why is he even need these?
Because that's where they park, that's where you come to the car, that's where you house.
Okay, but if it's a problem, then technically there's, there's right here on the other side.
The J and the stairs would really, the G.
Well, that's what I'm saying, he could take away the stairs. Walk around.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm. There are many ways of dedicating.
He has two sides of the general, that's a problem.
I would say that we, maybe we can start with that. Still have a deck and, uh, it will cost ninety, but that is, is cost, uh. Uh, that's always something. Um, so everyone gets what should be, you know, what they deserve, we need to be able to maintain seriousness of the process and the integrity of it. He wants to be able to have some outside of this, but you can't necessarily. We're gonna send it for, uh, two thirty nine, being that's on State Road, Jason's, uh, carpe owns, uh, the state of New York and two states.
These are fifty two.
Two forty two and Jason's, the carpe owns one in New York.
You have two thirty nine as well?
No, we.
This one's news. That's what it's finding, so. Um, what's the with this piece of that?
Can I just say, I'm sure that this wasn't done in balance, right? This person kept trying to break the law. I understand that, if the issue that they've done this and they were trying to break the law, the issue is that if we allow that, it's natural, I would repeatedly, then it becomes a fire safety issue across the board, and that's, I think, what we're trying to avoid tonight.
Very good.
The application says there's H O A approval, because that's not part of the materials, but can you try to, you can email it for the next time, I don't know, thirty seconds, but. As far as the mitigating factor.
Okay, so that would remain open. Uh, okay, now I have two thirty nine. And also, um, and also, uh, a proposal for something that will make me decide to get.
Yeah.
So we can't act on that. Uh, let me finish. Bye bye, bye bye, thank you. I'm not sure if we're there, you'll be, but I worry about your.
One thing, uh, the, the.
Thank you.
Um, the, they're, and, you know, because you have. And the protein you will think in that narrow, narrow distance, right? Like, there, there's actual fire safety. Next to the, that are not, so need, that is, uh, that's a big problem. And then you also have generally the fire safety in this property, as we've seen in the, the map, they've already provided, isn't great already, there the distance between buildings is already too close. I don't think it makes sense to allow another kind of. No, not about that. Doesn't make sense to have another practice type situation for the fire department, and not to mention that the way that these are even numbered doesn't make sense for the fire department, if they call and they say there's fire thirty two, there's no kind of rhyme or reason to that, so all, all of this for me comes out to safety and fire safety and for those reasons, it's, uh.
There will be nine one one numbers, by the way, they, they will go with these.
Okay.
Informal numbers.
Okay, I wanna make sure, yeah.
If they're both on the line, I was the builder of Cardinal Grove, you asked the question before, how do you acquire this piece of property? If it would cost money, and I know for a fact it won't cost any money, it's a very close relationship between the two properties. If you look in the property, it's a funny thing, but when we bought the Grove property, it had like a sliver of, of, upright along this whole property. And they have, they even have like a walkway from Grove coming down, or they could, because a lot of Grove families have parents living on the other side of fifty two, that's a perfect, forty two, they're serving it. And I don't know a lot of details, but it's like, they share their pool, they share their mix, and it's like, it's a lot of going in between.
You would buy the property and a lot of other people to use.
I think, you wouldn't, I don't think you would have to buy the property, because it's for them, it's to see the property, this is flat over here, but then it goes, there's a very high amount up, so all of this property is really useless for Cardinal Grove, but I don't think it was nothing to do with it, because it, it black holes up on the top, and then you have a small steep mountain over here, low down, that's where it comes flat, but for him, it's really usable land. But Cardinal Grove is really giving away something that's worthless to them, so I, I'm getting, I'm not here to promote whatever else that he'll. Why is that? No, I'm. Glenn could attest that you cannot hold on that.
No, that's right, I actually. Possibly. But I think, but my point is, I've heard this question being asked, how they can acquire it or whatever, I, I could tell you for a fact, it wouldn't have to be any monies changing any hats, because for these people, it's a, it's useless, they would give it to them, and they, and, and they have a good relationship, and would have a reason why they wanna help them out, so. So once you do the transition, then you'd be more in compliance.
Yeah.
But not before.
Honest, I'm good, I'm not good, I'm not the applicant, I'm just saying, it seems like to me that whatever requirements would be. On this, I'm good, I'm not good, I'm not the applicant, I'm just saying, it seems like to me that whatever requirements would be. I mean, whatever variances would be eliminated by getting this parcel, it could be a key that got this.
I'll do somewhere that quick, all the four variances that we're looking for, if you eliminate three of them, like. Like, by actually acquiring that sliver, that'd be a lot like.
All I'm saying, Glenn, you didn't do it until you acquired. I'm not taking anybody's word that.
So why don't you access, why don't you annex it? Because they're not gonna make this deal happen unless the deed there, in other words, if, if this board was saying, if you get that, um. These variances go fall apart, that could be intentional. Yeah, so I'm saying, my point is, I think, I'm getting, I'm not an attorney, I've never been this kind of. I'm trying to say is, that I heard from a fellow saying, Glenn, we have today, we're very close friends, but I'm just saying, I know that if this is a very. Achievable process, and it could be done, and if the board would say, if they do so and so, then they're okay with it, I can tell you what, what's that, never mind.
Could be saying that they don't need, the fact like they, the ones they apply the land.
And they need to fight, town phone allows them to bill file all two hour separation if you have less than twenty five feet, that's what we've done.
So in other words, if you were to give the, if you were to grant the, the fire, the, if you were to grant it with the conditions that they acquired the property. Grant the two side yard variances. I could hold the permit for the commencement of the work to continue to finish it till the property is acquired and deeded to the, to the county.
But the issue, I'm, I'm excited about that, I think anything that we can do to get variances off of this is great, but the issue remains. The distance between these buildings and the fact that there's propane tanks on both sides in between these buildings.
Most of them are being, the hands are being put all the way around, ready day, and being tight like distances. That's just like the old way of doing.
And another one again, so was the numbering of, of this building. Could it be twenty six A and twenty six B?
I just, but that, the, the, the. These two down, we eliminate the five building, three, four, five, and six, so these duplexes down here will be three, four, five, and six. I didn't wanna put three or four or five or six, okay, that really. Well, that, that's that nine one one sign, these aren't the nine one one.
And I, uh, there's another. You could have an required put of sun at the entrance with the map of the back, with the unit bumpers on it, that will take away your concern about. Not finding a building.
So what's five, three, four, five, you have the basketball court?
Three, four, five, and six are current, are current product, that gets knocked down, so what's gonna happen now, literally, is if this duplex stays here. This gets knocked down, and the second duplex is built there, and that's it, we're not gonna cover the basketball court as. Right, that, that wouldn't be it, that, that's really up here. That's an old existing, four year ago.
We're gonna pick out.
There's a difference between taking out permanently closed. Permanently closed means that you actually lock the doors and say, no, it's living there. Taking it down means it doesn't exist, and therefore there's nothing that for any.
Take out the kitchens and the bathrooms, one way of doing, which I think the building block was usually inside.
This guy, the extent, there's no, my, there's no, my people today. You know, you know, we have to entertain the worst case scenario, if it's there, it's affecting you, it's an inviting mess. And it's an invitation for violation, so I would not be comfortable with that.
And also, it's, it's a bit of an example on forty two, so to me, there's actually a benefit to it being. And as I mentioned, there's some funky wiring, fire safety issues right there.
I believe that there's a, there's some kind of electrical stuff permits they have taken out to correct some of that stuff, I think they were waiting. Yeah, I think that they were waiting on uh, NICE egg, uh, required some certain panels that they had out order, there's some stuff. There's some stuff to straighten out the funky wiring, just so you're aware.
I have a big issue with this, the only conditions that I can see would be that the purchase has to be completed, there has to be a site map at the beginning at the entrance. The, they have to knock down that building, the original one that was meant to be knocked down, they need to move the propane tanks that are, that are there. I still don't think it's an ideal, it's continuing to allow the look on to build and debase ways. From a fire perspective, but to me, those would be the conditions that I would entertain in order to.
Well, if they bring it up to current use, we bring it up to current practices, and it must be a way. Of replacing the propane tanks that are above ground.
There is, and it could be, it could be piped, even if it's above ground, it's still be further away.
The issue is still the coverage of people, it's minimal, what is. We need a two thirty nine for this anyway, right, this is yet another one.
Like I said, those fire separations are local zoning, I mean, I don't know what the, Glenn's an engineer, he's done, there, there's what they, they base building separation. Through the rest of New York State through ISO standards, which is the amount of calculated water flow the fire department has to put out the fires, that's. What governs building separations, but the town, uh, the town back in two thousand twelve, somewhere's around there. Twelve thirteen, we enacted all these, these uh, building separations. Yeah, it's, it's, it's like half, at least half the distance or even less, I mean, uh.
That you get like a buyer, like a safety instruction, like somebody who's actually going to the site and from the fire department and giving us the.
Well, we are, we are, we are actually the code enforcement office, we are fire inspectors for this. The firemen are really the fire inspectors, we are the fire safety inspectors.
It's like double fire rating.
Yes.
Upside there.
Yeah, we have, we have different, different, there's different paths, there's different paths, we have fire rate, we have fire impregnated plywood, that's, that's got a fire rating. There's coated plywood that has a fire rating, uh, the interior walls are then uh, type X sheet rock, which is fireproof. And we always have them insulate the walls. With rock wool insulation, which is like a mineral fiber knot, you can, you can throw a blowtorch at it, it doesn't burn, and that, that whole. Anything within the twenty five, anything within the, the, less than the twenty five hour separation, so. We, we build those, those sidewalls or those structures are built, so if they catch on fire, the fire can't spread outward, and if the building next to them catches on fire. It doesn't catch them on fire, it works both ways. It's a, it's an assembly, it's an assembly, it's not one specific product, it needs a two hour rating, so it's a, it's a. It's, it's a bunch of different components put together to achieve a two hour separation. So, no, it's okay, it's okay, it's a, it's, 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 there's different products you can use to achieve the fire rating. So.
Would, would the town do the referral for two thirty nine, or did that, that?
Uh, we request the. Oh, really, okay, things have changed with the county in the last. So, uh, yes.
Oh, so we're done on this, so maybe two thirty nine come back this month.
Three, four, five, and six, and I'm acquiring partly that one, yeah.
You, that's what you want for all information, right?
Yeah, like, you're moving, locking up. Since, you know, if you, cause even in three, four, five, and six, we guys are people answer on the road. Um, you know, it's water, since we move over the head.
Ellie, can you get maybe a contract since you're friendly with the owners, uh, uh, a commitment letter, maybe, something, a letter of commitment that.
Very friendly with both sides.
A letter.
Not to, I'm not the advocate. Here, it's a lot line adjustment, they, what you can do by deed, it's not gonna be like a sale contract, all on closing, it's gonna be. This lane is inserted, is inserted on a deed where, you know.
Now the porch. We could put a condition that they can't continue to build, build.
I have a specific.
Yes, but it, and I.
I'm not talking about the awning that's on a metal frame that you have to take it down in this, in the fall and up in the spring.
So the answer is that these awnings. Historically, they, they're all good for a little bit. They could last a year or two, many when, up, you know, up, what is it called?
I bought a house in Southport for twenty five years ago with a motorized awning. It's still in great shape, and it still works, twenty five years ago.
But do you have it open or not, question?
It opens, it closes, it stops anywhere you wanted to, in the winter. I retract it in the winter, and in the summer I can open and close it, and it's less money. So, excuse me, let me finish that one. It's less money than building a roof over there.
But unfortunately, the consumer doesn't want that, you might be right, you might prefer that, but the consumer is not happy actually.
I would say it's very, you're not happy with, with something that you could have sun at one time and shade in another time. I, I, I can't buy it.
I, I can attest to that, for a lot of people, I mean, look, we may have different communities, where they have different needs and different uh. You know, ways of, of how we live, a lot of people work for a roof stack rather than a, rather than a no.
I can tell you, I'm developing myself, whispering was, it's an eighteen year old place. And there's not one person that has a awning in the whole place, not one, and probably twenty five percent of the people have covered decks. Like proper covered decks, so it's, it's a question of, of people, I can look at.
You have a picture of the ones that are always done?
Their pictures are.
Well, I did, I mean, I have a.
True idea. I think it's just that, these are the, the, the forest companies. I have a question about.
Yeah, so it's a problem with circumstances, that's why a lot of people, I, I know, I could see a lot of people wanting that. Because then they can actually have a, you know.
A uh, you know.
So a lot of the people actually, we quoted this little concern, they don't have a full coverage, they use half of it is. Is open deck, but took an open deck and that's all had that.
Sharpening up the uh, you know, the porch.
I mean, if you look around the town, there's not one that ever happened, Greg, Greg, you ever saw someone taking a cover deck and taking both of them?
Not really, but trying to get into the building in such a way that it can't slide off.
That's enforcement, that's why when we do this, we have to provide and not.
So, I just.
Uh, someone. Say an absolute solid. Porch cover. And not in any way to be, Greg, if it is for.
So it's like, yeah, I mean, it's gonna, if you build the porch and that's gonna have to be built to code and. Greg's inspectors would be out of their sight. I mean, it shouldn't, and if it's not built to code, then it's, it's not gonna get a C O and it's.
I mean, Greg could attest, we have, we, we have, we didn't bring in an architectural plan, how it's gonna be done, and it's renewed, and only then it's a permit.
At the, at the end of the day, this, this, this is, this is a aesthetic. Uh, they're allowed to do some, most developments do this, uh, the, the developments, the design with. With retention ponds and the proper water stuff, uh, other places have, have gone over the lock coverage over the years, uh. They, see, we include everything, we don't include just the structures, Fallsberry includes every bit of black topping in there. Every bit of parking lots, the ball courts, all that in this lock coverage calculation, where Thompson doesn't. Uh, we include, i- if we didn't include the, all the black tops and the roads and all that stuff. We would only be a twenty percent lock coverage or even less, so, 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 uh. This, this to me is not a. It's not a big ask from my standpoint to achieve what needs to be done to complete the development, and uh. Nobody's ever has permission, so there's a square footage limitation to these developments, so these will never become living space rooms, they're always gonna remain open decks. I mean, uh.
Uh, the town has an exception, I think it's the B zoning. Uh, there's some, there's some exceptions for certain units.
My question, I could find, one of them, are these the options that you're offering?
Most, most of the, this is not only on there, this sounds, you know, this would be extended out, just like. No, this would not. Use them open, open that area, not.
So this is not.
No, if you just brought what was being shown.
So you're saying it's on. The, uh, you were saying that the drain, the, the issue with this is that increasing the lock coverage has issue with water drainage.
So the purpose, the potential for increasing lock coverage would be, the reason why we have lock coverage calculations for development is so they don't exceed. So much ground cover for impervious surfaces, for water runoff, for drainage and stuff like that, so, uh. The, this, this place has been designed to absorb all that drainage and accept all the drainage, and the, the uh. The roofing, these roofing systems get tied into the gutters of the original houses, which tie into the drainage system, so it's really, it's just, uh.
Really makes sense, uh, to me, that was the only concern here, uh, we can leave the two thirty nine, we can actually vote on this today.
And I actually, to your two percent, actually the conversation with engineer, and he told me there was enough access capacity, you just throw more matching practices to even have more of that. But, so, I looked at it.
My other big question was if you're expanding the lock coverage to thirty point seven five, does that mean that if anyone else wants to expand their.
No, it's gonna be one, they cannot do, there's no way of expanding the lock of this place.
So this, these, 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 so, so these fall into a duplex development law, there's a set square footage, they're allowed to build the footprint wise. And there's, there, 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 that's what they're stuck to, six bedroom, six, no, there, there's six. There's, no, there's six bedroom, certain footprint they have to stay in, there's, there's no, no additions in these places or, or anything else. They're allowed to finish their basements, that's the only, uh.
Which means that you're gonna all of them have half the coverage and that they have.
No, some, no, I wanna be clear. No, no, this is not even a call. We didn't have a full cover, or some people left them to have a half over here, should have been able to use a half of the deck as a, as a. Or the down there. See, that can be the first one that will, this, this was a designer.
All right, so we, um, we really are, are not able to, we don't have any actionable items. Uh, tonight, but I would say that you've given us a lot of information, we appreciate, and very forthcoming. Uh, and, um, oh, do we have any? Do you want to keep the public here in open for next time or?
There's no holes.
All right, it's up to you guys. Unless you think something might come to mind, uh, or.
Otherwise, this is gonna be.
Okay, all right, all right.
Yeah.
I'm looking to close.
Okay, and do we have a second? All right. Fine. Thank you, everybody.
So I can keep giving you permits for these until you reach your lock coverage, but then, like I said, it's, uh. Okay.
Forget it, I don't wanna be just.
Too early.
Still, thanks.
And then we need a little.
Thank you.
Then we need a motion to let them all.
So not, it's not executive session, it's, uh, we'll keep the meeting, it's just procedures, so.
We're discussing the better way.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So for next month, the question is, you know, we wanna have it continually, the, the public hearings upfront and then each matter, or do you wanna go back to the prior methodology, which is just. Public hearing is open with each, I have a goal for new business.
Prior to each event, so you have to put a time on them that is twenty minutes between these things.
All right.
That makes sense. Maybe that, you know, I could rather we don't. Think that, but I'd say on the shorter time, so that it, worst case, it's late, but, um.
Yeah.
The old ways, but. He's going back and forth, back and forth, and getting, uh, so this way you have to blow them the issue years.
Yeah.
The presenter presents once, there's a public hearing, Joe, you like it that way better? I know. But you're.
Thanks, Michael. Well, you know, what you have a lot of public, I mean, to the meetings, you really first wanna get public hearings open, so you don't have a crowd, you don't full crowd there, but. And that's, cause we do, I mean, let me have a seat, whatever defines the report.
Well, talking about a full crowd, Joe, once the season goes, we get to sell tickets.
The code enforcement officer will throw out anybody over, over thirty seven people.
Right, right, we got this word about the topic, several, several prefer this way.
I like this one, because I feel like we closed it to the public, quote unquote, like we hear what they have to say, nobody else says anything, and then. We could write, e- everyone can have a plan paper and write down all their questions, but this meeting is the fastest meeting I've been to, and it was the Vol State South Agenda in January. You know, well, I mean. Just two and three.
I agree that this was a fast meeting. And that is benefit, because I feel like we were a little bit more to do this.
I'm, um, a kid who, and you know.
I think if we can keep, if we can keep the process streamlined to the other way, maybe, like, I think that that would be, right, that's what I.
Well, I think that it was a lot, there was a lot of, by the other meetings, there was a lot of, let's say with the, uh, what does that one, like the that project, it was like. You said this, then we said this, then they said this, then he said this, then she said this, then he said five things, and then they said five things, and then the guy was just like, okay, okay, okay. This is the case, and we were just like, and as the board, we were like, okay, we wanna vote no, we wanna vote no, we wanna vote no, but just, but just from hearing from the public, every time he brought us new. But now it's like, it's too bad. Once we close it, we're done, and if we ask questions that bring up new things, then like, maybe next meeting. Or otherwise, you could have asked that question if you thought about it yourself, it's not your business. Yeah.
Well, I think that's also.
Questions.
Procedure too, though, if someone's talking when it's not public hearing, it shouldn't be, you know, at that point, and, you know, a public hearing is really not supposed to be. Worth like, the way it tends to be, it's more, I have my five things I wanna point out. You know, it's become too much of what, ask questions, see if I can find something that.
And that can also help us round ourselves, or. That we're not saying anything during the public comment, we just keep our mouth shut, we don't add any comments, because our comments are, I guess, quote unquote, privately, it doesn't matter what we think.
I'm, I'm, I think we should try this again in the next month. And about, for.
Hold on, let me look.
The rare times.
Let's see, it's like twelve, it's like. Let's see.
What's the secret? You know, like, when, like, their really good thing, we had that, you know, we had.
So I ate.
Yeah, a large group, you wanna make sure that people understand. How much they need to be prepared to have a comment, because they won't be sharing the whole discussion before they. And a lot of people don't, they're not, it's not easy to do, it's not easy to. I gather that information and public, yeah.
Unfortunately, hopefully, we didn't hear. Right, a lot of what is our based on, that they don't really care about. Or, you know what I mean, it's like, they'll ask about the fire, they'll ask about the water, they'll ask about the random stuff that they have a concern for, but once they hear. Our concerns or our, more about the project, then they're like, oh, no, I have to reset concern, well, like, you didn't have a concern. You have another. Yeah.
Stamp, and then we have a variety of.
Plus, we have the rights and we've been open to the next one, so, you know, that's always. More facts gathered, we've done as much as so.
Now, I was just wondering also, the two thirty nine, is that something, when there's, when. They apply. Talk about some.
Well, the board has to ask for it to, to trigger it. Well, no, you just, you just say.
You can't ask for it in advance, like they know they're four hundred, forty two or fifty two.
That makes more sense if they.
Even in advance, but as long as they, like, even if, but everybody knows.
Sets to them, and then it's the only time to get to them, not that, so ideally, once it's near, then it's, it's automatic trigger.
Yeah.
Well, they have, the county has thirty days and wishing they respond, so.
So when they submit their application.
No, they know what happened.
Like I said, I think that's fun, so the ZBI applications are typically submitted three weeks prior to the meeting. Uh, to their interviews, they need, you know, if you need to give that thirty days, there's a, there's a section of the court that you can fill out. Uh, you know, that we would like to have it done by some state, which would be using the meeting day, usually for those three weeks, the county can have it done. But in the case that they don't have it done, you wanna be able to vote, but. Should be able to.
You told you're on a state road, so as soon as you think about sending your application, get this in, so that you have it within thirty days.
Uh, I would, I would, we can put it in the.
I would, I would be in favor, I would, I would be in favor sending them out, sending them out to eliminate repeat people back, but I was told that might not be following proper procedure, so.
I think you know that helps to come to meetings, and so this is gonna be.
I'm having a shooting right in the matter. Uh, meetings or anything, so they don't have to, they don't have to, so.
You need to return. I'm, I'm.